Madam Clerk, if you're ready, read the notice.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, October 7, 2025. The time is now 7:09. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 21, 2024, issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Kelly?
Present.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. How are things overseas?
Great so far.
Good to hear. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Minutes, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. We have a Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for August 19, 2025, September 2, 2025, and September 3, 2025.
Move the minutes. Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Can you move on to communications, please?
Thank you. The mayor's office has submitted an event application to hold a rug march on November 8, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The march will begin at the World War II Monument, continuing through Memorial Park to the waterfall, and returning along the same route. The mayor's office has submitted an event application to hold an annual township tree and menorah lighting on Sunday, December 7, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in front of Nutley Town Hall. The event will also include activities on Chestnut Street, Franklin Avenue, and Vincent Place. The Nutley Elks Lodge, number 1290, has submitted an application for a social fair permit for their fundraiser to be held on Saturday, November 1, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. at 242 Chestnut Street. Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Thank you. Bills?
Thank you. Bill list for October 7, 2025. Public Affairs, $141,911.13. Revenue and Finance, $3,624,746.15. Public Safety, $135,358.66. Public Works, $337,343.15. Parks and Public Property, $1,169,387.1. Water and Sewer Utilities, $68,896.48. Payroll as of September 26, 2025, regular payroll total, $950,878.60. Overtime payroll total, $68,266.57. Total payroll, $1,019,145.17, for a grand total of $6,496,787.75.
Move the bills?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Thank you. Thank you. We've reached the point in the agenda for public comment. If anyone from the public wished to comment on the agenda tonight, agenda items only. Seeing no one, Commissioners, Commissioner Scarpelli, any announcements?
No announcements, Deputy Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
The only kind of question I have, and I've been around town a lot, and Mayor Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I was just wondering, because I've been getting stopped an awful lot, of whatever happened with the Board of Education and the audit. Did they do it? Are we doing it? It's kind of embarrassing, like, when people come up to me and ask me the question of what's going on with that, because I haven't heard anything. Has anybody on our board?
Yeah. So, the Subcommittee has, a while ago, met on that, and one of the critical actions that we had to take was to find a source of funding that could pay for that. So, we were fortunate in that, working with Assemblyman Benesia, we've been able to receive a state grant of $100,000 to be able to conduct the audit. Right now, it's now identifying someone who has the skills to do a comprehensive forensic audit of the School Board. And so, it's moving along. It's not done yet, but the Board understands that it needs to be done. We now have identified the funding for that, right? And the funding came to the municipality, so the municipality will pay for it, right?
But the Board of Ed will do it?
But the Board of Ed will do it, but they, we're going to make sure that whoever is selected is qualified to do it. But that's, so to answer your question, it hasn't been done yet. It hasn't been forgotten. It will come.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just one thing. This Friday, starting at 7 o'clock, from 7 to 9, we're having movie night at 44 Park Avenue. It's a great time. It's a great night. Hopefully, the weather's going to cooperate, so I would encourage everyone to please come out. And the second thing I have is, I just want to thank everyone for all their help and participation. Last Sunday, we had our Fall Festival in the park, and it was an outstanding day. There were many vendors there. There were food trucks. It was just a great time. I just want to thank everyone, in addition to my department, of course, for all the hard work that they put into it. It was another rousing success. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, just one thing.
Yeah, I just got a text message. What time is your event Friday night? Okay, we have fire open house this Friday night, and I'm happy to announce it starts at 6 o'clock. So, I think we worked very good together this year.
Yes.
And I hope everybody could make both events.
We need to continue to coordinate our.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
That's really great. That's really great. Yeah, just from my standpoint, we did recently have the New Jersey Division of Motor Vehicle, a portable unit here in Nutley, to do motor vehicle inspections. It was a successful day. They were able to inspect 78 vehicles. The current schedule will bring them back two more times. Madam Clerk, October and November, correct?
Yes, it's the third Wednesday, and I believe the third Thursday in November, but they will be posted on our website.
Right, so in November, they'll be back. We're still working with the state to actually have the mobile unit come back for registrations, license renewals, and so on. They have been in very high demand, as you can imagine, but we will get them, get them back here in the coming months. Mayor, announcements? Mayor Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just real briefly, we had our Health Fair this past weekend. It was a great success. I want to thank everyone for that. We also had our annual Pause in the Park event in conjunction with the Farmer's Market, which was another great success. And later this month, we'll be having our second round of trivia at the Old Canal Inn, who is the, would be hosting it this month. Be on the lookout for more information for that.
Thank you. Let's move on to ordinance. The ordinance is, we don't have any introductions this evening, but we do have three public hearings. The first one is a joint ordinance between myself and Commissioner Tucci. This is an ordinance that is, in effect, covers a matching contribution for playground improvements for special needs children, providing for 137,000 of our share of that grant. Commissioner, would you like to comment on it?
Yes, just once again, this is a, this is a long overdue project. It'll not only address the physical needs of some of our special needs folks, but it will also address some of the sensory needs. So, it'll be cutting edge. We're really looking forward to getting this started and getting this completed, so that all of our people can participate in everything that we have.
Would anyone wish to comment on this ordinance itself? Seeing no one, I've moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you. The next ordinance is number 3599. This is an ordinance that I introduced on September 2, providing for $100,000 to improve and renovate two bathrooms on the second floor in Town Hall. We've been going through a program of renovating those, and it's just, they're in the schedule, but it's necessary to do. Would anyone wish to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Yep. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
I was just thinking, it's great to have the musical accompaniment to our ordinance passages. Very nice.
I think it's very nice.
Our last ordinance is number 3600. This one was introduced by me on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. This ordinance relates to the adoption of the financing agreement for the Innovation Center, which will be built on the, on three properties, and for an entity known as One Molecule Urban Renewal LLC, granting them a, in the form of a pilot payment, a tax exemption over the life of the pilot. Would anyone wish to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Moving on to resolutions, I'll go last. Commissioner Scarpelli, would you like to read yours?
Give me a second, Deputy Mayor. Let me perloo here.
You've got to be ready. You've got to be ready.
Whereas David Berry Jr. is employed by the Township of Nutley Department of Public Works, and whereas David Berry Jr. has exhausted all his available sick leave and other time due, and whereas 10 employees of the Department of Public Works are desirous of transferring one day each of their accumulated sick leave for a total of 10 days to be transferred to David Berry Jr., and whereas the aforementioned employees have provided their consent to said transfers in writing to the Township clerk, whereas under the circumstances presented herein in view of David Berry Jr.'s medical situation and service to the Department of Public Works, Board of Commissioners are desirous of accommodating this request. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, that each of the following employees are permitted to transfer one day of their accumulated sick leave to David Berry Jr. for a total of 10 days. Anthony Christie, Joseph Sefeli, Joseph Farro, Salvatore Ferraro, Michael Lozzi Jr., Vito Knoll, Miguel Contrero, Peter Russo, Anthony Santissari, and Michael Zatola. I move the resolution. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, the Township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for seal bid proposals, RFP, for the marketing of recycling materials collected for the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township Paul, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and read. I move the resolution. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, the Township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the 2026 acceptance of recycling vegetated waste, to include leaf and grass clippings and the Township of Nutley to receive on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township of Nutley, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and read. I move the resolution. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2024 CDBG Franklin Avenue Streetscape Project, Chestnut Street to Booth Drive, were received and opened on Wednesday, September 10, 2025, and whereas AA Berms LLC, P.O. Box 180, Belvin, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder, whereas the base bid for the 2024 CDBG Franklin Avenue Streetscape Project is in the amount of $253,086.30, for a total bid of $253,086.30, whereas the award of this contract is subject to the availability of appropriation of sufficient funds from the Essex County Community Development Block Grant Account, T19909901, in the amount of $2,503.86.30, subject to the caveat, have been certified, the Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to AA Berms LLC for the total bid in the amount, as you can see, $253,086.30, that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley, subject to the final approval and funding by the Essex County Community Development Block Grant. I move the resolution. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex State, New Jersey, that the Township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for Bluefield Avenue, High Street to Raymond Avenue, NJ DOT roadway project to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers, Township Paul, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, on Wednesday, October 29, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time, at which time they will be opened and read. I move the resolution. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
That's all I have, Deputy Mayor.
You want me to read Commissioner Tucci's first, or mine? You tell me. Okay, this is for Commissioner Tucci. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to ensure compliance with IRS regulations for the year 2025 reporting, and where such services may be required as a non-fair open contract pursuant to the provisions, that's NJSA 1944-8, 20.4, or 20.5, as appropriate. And whereas Prime Point LLC, located at Two Springs, Springside Road, West Hamp, West Hamp, in New Jersey, has submitted as a proposal dated September 17, 2025, an anticipated cost of $7,375 to complete these services and assure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley, and whereas funds are available from the budget account 6-01-526-200, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, and whereas Prime Point LLC has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies Prime Point has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Prime Point from making any reportable contributions throughout the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex State, of New Jersey hereby authorize the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Prime Point LLC. I move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, before, before I vote, I just want to put this on the record. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Evans and Commissioner Petracca for reading my resolutions this evening. I had an eye examination this afternoon, and they dilated my pupils, so I'm still having a hard time reading. So, I vote aye, and thank you, gentlemen.
Our pleasure. Okay, whereas Italian-Americans.
I didn't finish this.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, whereas, thank you. Whereas Italian-Americans have played an essential role in shaping the culture, economic, and social landscape of the United States, contributing significantly across diverse fields, including the arts, sciences, education, civil service, military business, and athletics. And whereas, one of the largest ethnic groups in the United States, Italian-Americans have enriched our communities with enduring traditions, strong family values, and commitment to hard work and civic pride. And whereas the month of October includes the commemoration of Christopher Columbus, whose historic voyage symbolizes the spirit of exploration and ambition that has inspired generations of Americans. And whereas Italian-American heritage and cultural month is a time to honor many achievements and lasting contributions of Italian-Americans to the history, identity, and prosperity of the nation. And whereas in New Jersey, and especially in the Township of Nutley, the Italian-American communities has helped to build a vibrant and diverse society, contributing to our local economy, public service, education, faith institutions, and cultural life. Whereas Italian patriot and immigrant Philip Mazzia, a friend of, an ally of Thomas Jefferson, helped shape and various principles of democracy, his behalf, that all American are created equal, is reflected in the words of the Declaration of Independence. And whereas despite facing discrimination and adversity upon arrival in America, Italian-Americans demonstrated perseverance and resilience, becoming leaders and innovators in all facets of American life. And whereas today, Italian-Americans continue to honor the legacy of their ancestors by excelling in every professional force during community development, and preserving a rich cultural heritage for the future generations. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County, Essex State, of New Jersey, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Italian-American and Culture Month, and encourages all residents to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of Italian-Americans to Township of Nutley, the State of New Jersey, and the United States of America. And I am very pleased to read this resolution, Commissioner, and Deputy Mayor, thank you for picking me for this one, and I proudly move this resolution on behalf of Commissioner Tucci.
Second.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, our next one. Whereas in the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program provides loans and grants to municipality and county governments, and grants to non-profit organizations for assistance in the acquisition and development of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further, further the public interest by obtaining a Green Acres grant of $528,755, and an urban parks grant of $500,000 from the state to fund the following projects. This is Monsignor Owens Park Improvements. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Board of Commissioners, that the mayor of the above-named body or board is hereby with the rights to execute an agreement and amendments thereto with the state known as 071623015UPG Monsignor Owens Park Improvements, and the applicant agrees to provide its match and share of the Green Acres Fund of its matches required, and in the amount of zero. And the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in the performance of the project. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Oh, Lenny Pettis Town Clerk do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true copy of resolutions adopted by the Township of Nutley at a meeting held on the 7th day of October, 2025, and witness whereof I have here under set my hand and the official seal of this body on the 7th day of October, 2025. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, just, once again, into the record, I'd like to, I'd like to submit that this is a $1,028,755 improvement of the girls softball field that borders on Grand Avenue, without any match from the Township of New Jersey. Okay, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, be resolved that in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Law, Chapter 231, Bill 1975, the public meetings of the State Tree Committee for 2026 will be held on the following dates. All meetings are held virtually via Zoom teleconference unless otherwise posted at 7:30 p.m. January 27, 2026, March 31, 2026, April 28, June 9, September 29, and November 24, all of 2026. I move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Yours. You want me to read mine next? Wow, we're really jumping around tonight. Okay. Got to be on your toes here at all times. Okay, now these are mine. Whereas NJSA 8-41 requires that Emergency Management Council be formed to coordinate all disaster control activities on behalf of the Township of Nutley County, Essex State of New Jersey. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, that the following persons be appointed to the Emergency Management Council, Local Emergency Plant Council, Environmental Commission, for three, your term on behalf of the Township of Nutley, January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027. That's going to be Denise Cuffone, our qualified purchasing agent. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, whereas a confirming order is defined as a purchase made without the issuance of a valid purchase order, an incumbent of funds in accordance with the Local Public Contracts Law, JA4811-1, whereas because of the need to relocate the hazardous materials vehicles from their present location at Franklin Terrace in a timely manner, and for emergency repairs of the fire boom truck. And whereas the Township of Nutley received building renovations from JB General Contracting, Inc. of 252 Highfield Lane, Nutley, and repairs from Ariel Rise, 36-42 Fulton Street Patterson for the fire boom truck. Whereas in the effort to correct protocol, necessary paperwork, and obtain all the vendors, thus confirming that the need for said goods, services were valid and properly incurred, Township operations, whereas JB Contracting, Inc. has submitted an invoice in the amount of $29,800 for building renovations, and Ariel Rise has submitted invoices in the amount of $3,199.04, and $2,277.76 for repairs to the fire boom truck. And whereas the Chief Financial Officer certified that the funds are available for the building renovations in account number C0455166412, and for the boom truck repairs in account number 501314201. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body, Township of Nutley County, Essex State, of New Jersey, that payment of confirming order JB General Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $29,800, and payment of confirming order to Ariel Rise, in the amount of $3,199.04, and $2,277.76 is hereby authorized. This shall, this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move it.
Second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay. Whereas the Department of Transportation, NJDOT, has completed an investigation to access the necessary reducing the speed limit along Route 7 in Township of Nutley, filed an inquiry from the township resident. And whereas the NJDOT's Division of Traffic Engineering conducts a thorough investigation which supports implementing a 25 mile per hour speed limit on the section of Route New Jersey 7 in the Township of Nutley. And whereas the section extends from Essex County, Passaic County Corporate Line in Yonakaw Palm Brook to Essex County Passaic County Line at Orange Street. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County Vestas State of New Jersey that the Township of Nutley hereby approves reducing the speed limit along Route 7 to 25 miles an hour. Be further resolved that the Township of Nutley concurs that any approved traffic regulations in conflict with inconsistency with the provisions of this resolution be rescinded upon approval of the traffic regulation order. I move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the township has a need for services relating to off-duty employment, fire personnel for fire and MS-related activities. Whereas NJSA 4811-5 provides for support software maintenance consulting services and training services of propriety, computer hardware and software. Whereas the term of engagement shall be two years and starting on May 1, 2025 and ending on April 30, 2027. Either party may terminate this agreement upon 30 days prior to written notice of other party. And whereas administrative fees of more than 8% is to be collected by Visual Computer Solutions. Whereas there is no cost to the township for such services. Whereas the term of this engagement shall commence on the effective date and continue unless termination by either party. Either party may terminate this agreement upon 30 days prior to written notice. Now therefore be resolved by the Commissioners Township of Nutley County Vestas State of New Jersey that the township be authorized to execute such documents as necessary to implement the resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, I believe this is my last one off a long night. Where, well, this one ain't a funny one, actually. Whereas domestic violence encompasses any violence taking place in a family or intimate relationship. And whereas the abuse is not only physical but can be verbal and may include sexual assault, threats, financial control, and/or isolation. Whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, social, economic, status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality. And whereas in the United States, one in four women or, and one in seven men experience contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas 85% of domestic violent victims are women, where every day nearly three women are killed by intimate partners. And whereas domestic violence impacts the entire family, 30% to 60% of intimate partner violence cases also include child abuse, which is very sad. And whereas victims of domestic violence are encouraged to call the National Domestic Violence Hotline or reach out to local agencies and police departments for assistance. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County Vestas, State of New Jersey, and recognize the month of October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Just before I do vote aye, domestic violence in our country, state, and even here in Nutley is really on the rise. Just so everyone knows out there, it is so much easier to walk away and not get violent and quite honestly, not get arrested. Police departments, the law is very clear on domestic violence. There is absolutely no discretion at all. If there's a mark on your partner or, you know, a million rules about that, you will be sent to jail. And I could tell you, it's definitely not worth it, and it's definitely not worth it to, you know, have cops come into your house in front of children and things like that. And it's, through my experience sitting in this seat for a long time, and, you know, no one's perfect, obviously, and neither am I. But it seems like the biggest response after somebody sitting in the Nutley jail cell overnight in the morning, it's like, what in the world was I thinking? You know, so again, we all have our tempers, you know? The best thing to do is get out of your house, walk away, and avoid a problem. And, you know, hopefully in the morning, you'll feel better and so will your partner. So I vote aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, that's all I have. I was just wondering who was going to read next since we're jumping around.
Commissioner, thank you for helping out tonight.
My pleasure.
I'm sure Commissioner Tucci is eternally grateful.
I have to tell you, I was.
And I hear you're now on his Christmas card last night.
I hope I am. And I have to tell you, Commissioner Tucci, I don't know that there's anything wrong with your eyes because the print on your resolution are much smaller than the print on mine. So hopefully you have a quick heal with those eyes.
I need to have them increase those.
Yeah, I was noticing as well that he was commenting on the resolutions. So he probably read them yesterday.
Yes.
In advance of the meeting. Mayor, you're online, so following protocol, I'll let you go last.
Sure, but if someone would be kind enough to read my resolutions this evening, my internet connection is not the greatest and I don't want to cut out.
You have two left, I'll take them.
Thank you.
All right, so the first two resolutions that I'll read will be on behalf of Commissioner Tucci. Whereas the Department of Public Works in public property, excuse me, Department of Parks and Public Property, not Department of Public Works, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. Department of Parks and Public Property had determined a need to refund for families. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amount of $75 for the soccer recreation program as listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.5. And whereas a resolution was adopted on October 15, 2024, awarding a contract to C. Walter Searle Agency LLC/World Insurance Associates 410 Franklin Avenue here in Nutley for accident safety review board meetings becoming effective January 1, 2025 for a period of one year with an option to extend no more than one year. Whereas the township wishes to extend the contract entered into between C. Walter Searle Agency and the Township of Nutley for the length of one calendar year beginning January 1, 2026 and continue through December 31, 2026. Whereas the anticipated cost of this service will not exceed $10,000 per year. Whereas funds will be available from account 601516245 and have and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said funds being available with the adoption of the 2026 budget. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, authorize the extension of the contract between Walter Searle Agency LLC/World Insurance Associates on Franklin Avenue in Nutley and the Township of Nutley for one calendar of a year pursuant to the previously signed agreements, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca? Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.5. Whereas the Township through the Department of Parks and Recreation has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for architectural review, services for the renovation of the Nutley Fire Department Headquarters' existing bunk area and incorporation of a new hallway. Whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group LLC, 74 East Passaic Avenue in Nutley, has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed $19,750. Whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group has completed submitted a business entity disclosure certification with certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committing the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Dasa Haynes Architectural Group from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available from account C0455166412 in the amount of $19,750 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey to entry into a contract with Dasa Haynes Architectural Group as described herein, be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution and be further resolved that notice of this action shall be printed once and the Nutley sign in accordance with local public contract law, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Happy to help out, Commissioner, but shorter would have been better. My last resolution for Commissioner Tucci, whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.5. Whereas the requests for qualifications for township forester were received and opened on October 3, 2025. Whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications was from the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linsen, P.O., Bucks, 6089, West Orange, New Jersey. Whereas the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linsen, New Jersey, Certified Tree Expert Number 198, has provided these services in the past in the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service. Whereas the term of this contract is for one year beginning October 23, 2025 and through October 26, 2022, October 22, 2026. Whereas the contract is not to exceed $32,500. Funds are available in account 501512200 in the amount of $6,005 and in account 601512200 in the amount of $26,495 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Since this also extends into 2026, this amount will also be included in the 2026 budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linsen, as described herein, be further resolved that a response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution and a notice of this action be printed once and the Nutley sign in accordance with local public contract law, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Be resolved by, these are mine, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $9,075.63 for the amounts in the accounts listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Right.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas McCullough Contracting submitted a payment for a tank removal permit for a property located at 42 Hopper Avenue in Nutley. Whereas the permit fee in the amount of $75 was collected and deposited into account C01904903. Whereas upon review, the code enforcement department has determined that a permit was not required for the tank removal. Whereas a permit fee of $75 included a non-refundable 20% plan review fee of $15, which will be retained by the township resulting in a refundable balance of $60. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a refund in the amount of $60 be issued to Rocco Setola representing the refundable portion of permit fee, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
Whereas the State of New Jersey statute 54433 provides that war veterans who were honorably discharged from active service in a time of war in any branch of the armed services of the United States who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veteran Administration to be 100% totally and permanently disabled connected to their wartime service, a full tax exemption of their dwelling and lot on which it is situated. Whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of a full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Aaron J. Mixon be granted a full exemption from payment of property taxes from September 11, 2025, and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as Block 9401, Lot 10. Be further resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $654.36 for 2025 property taxes, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Thank you for your service, aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to purchase various goods or services in the year 2025, whereas pursuant to provisions of NJSA 4811-12, municipalities are permitted to use, the use of awarded New Jersey state contracts to purchase goods or services from approved vendors. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 5232-6.2, municipalities are permitted to enter into cooperative purchasing agreements permitting the use of those awarded contracts. Whereas pursuant to provisions of NJSA 4811-10 and NJAC 534-7.11, municipalities are permitted to enter into cooperative purchasing agreements permitting the use of those awarded contracts. Whereas the Township of Nutley has previously approved membership in the following cooperative purchasing and pricing agreements and desires to continue to utilize them in 2026. These include the Essex County Cooperative Purchasing Program, the North Jersey Waste Water Cooperative Pricing Center, State of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program, the National Cooperative Purchasing Programs, including U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, Source Wealth/National Joint Powers Alliance, Keystone Purchasing Networks, and HTAC Buy. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that it hereby authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase goods and services from the New Jersey state contracts in the cooperative purchasing and pricing agreements listed above pursuant to all conditions of the individual contracts for the year 2026 commencing January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Kelly?
Aye.
My last resolution is a resolution of the governing body of the Township of Nutley County of Essex authorizing an increase in the bid threshold pursuant to NJSA 4811-3. Pursuant to NJ4811-3, the governor in consultation with the state treasurer has the authority to adjust the bidding, the public bidding thresholds for contracting units subject to public contracting laws. Whereas effective July 1, the state treasurer increased the maximum bid threshold to $53,000 for contracting units that have a qualified purchasing agent. Whereas the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex has a duly certified, qualified purchasing agent, Denise Capone, who is authorized to work contracts up to the maximum bid threshold. Whereas NJSA 4811-3 permits the governing body to increase the bid threshold by resolution for the execution of contracts without public bid when said contracts do not exceed the adjusted maximum amount. Whereas the governing body of the township desires to take advantage of the increased bid threshold to efficiently procure goods and services. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that 1, the bid threshold for contracts awarded by the qualified purchasing agent is hereby increased to $53,000 effective September 16, 2025. The qualified purchasing agent is authorized to work contracts in the aggregate not exceeding $53,000. fifty-three thousand without public advertising for bids, so long as all other provisions of public contracting law are followed. Three, the qualified purchasing agents further are authorized to solicit competitive bid quotations for purchases that exceed fifteen percent of the bid threshold, which is now set at seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars without formal bidding, provided all legal requirements are met. And for the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to follow copy of this resolution and the QPA certification with the director of the Division of Local Governmental Services in accordance with NJAC five, colon, thirty-four, dash, five, dot, four. Be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
And I have just a few resolutions left, which are now, I'll read on behalf of, of Mayor Kelly. Whereas a raffle license application has been received from the following organization, Radcliffe School PTO License Number Fifty-six, dash, five, On Premises Fifty-Fifty Cash Raffle for Friday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned license is hereby approved and the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
The last resolution for this evening is by Mayor Kelly on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the planning board of the Township of Nutley to conduct a preliminary investigation of certain property within the township for potential redevelopment. Whereas NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash, twelve, A, dash, six authorizes the governing body, any municipality by resolution to have its planning board conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether an area municipality is a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the criteria contained in NJSA forty, A, colon, twelve, A, prescribed. Whereas Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley considers it to be in the best interest of the township to have the township planning board conduct such an investigation of an area consisting of certain properties located in the township, which properties are identified as block one oh two, lot nine on the official tax map of the Township of Nutley. Whereas the township believes the property is potentially valuable for contributing to serving and protecting the public health, safety, and welfare for the promotion of smart growth within the township. Whereas the preliminary investigation will design, will be designed to evaluate the area, determine whether the designation of property, of the property a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment is appropriate and in conformance with the statutory criteria contained in NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, A, dash, five. And whereas a subject, and whereas subject to the results of the preliminary investigation in the area, the redevelopment area determination, if so made by the Board of Commissioners, shall authorize the township to use all those powers under the local redevelopment and housing law, except that such determination shall not permit the township to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire any, all or any portion of the property. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township, Township of Nutley, one. The planning board of the township is hereby directed to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the aforementioned property constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment according to the criteria set forth in NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, A, dash, five. The planning board of the township is hereby directed to study the area known as block one oh two, lot nine on the official tax map of the township to develop a map reflecting the boundaries of such proposed non-condemnation redevelopment area to provide public notice and conduct public hearings pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, A, dash, six, and to draft a report and resolution to the Board of Commissioners containing its findings. Three, with the results of such preliminary investigations, so be permitted, submitted to the Board of Commissioners for review and consideration in determining whether to declare the property a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment in accordance with provisions of NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, A, dash, one, at S, so move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, aye.
You're welcome, Mayor. That concludes the formal portion of our meeting tonight. We now open up the meeting to public comment. After the public comment period, we will have a need to go into executive session. Madam Clerk, for what areas?
Do you want me to read public comment, Nate?
I just, I just don't remember where we're going for litigation.
Going in for contract negotiations and litigation.
Litigation. And going in, we won't conduct any further business, so the meeting will conclude. However, Madam Clerk, would you please read the public comment notice?
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Would anyone wish to approach the microphone if we're to, for public comment this evening? Seeing no one, move to close public comment period.
Move it. Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Kelly.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you read the executive session notice?
Sure. Do we need a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Right.
Thank you. Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations and litigation. Be a further result that the time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.[1773.35]